All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District Board of Trustees to order for October 7th, 2021. Ask the Secretary, please call it a roll.
Mr. Dumas, Mr. Joyce.
Here.
Mayor Ali.
Here.
President Brown.
Here.
Mr. Sulik.
Here.
Mayor DeGea.
President.
President.
Thank you. Ask for the approval of the minutes from our September 16th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulik. Is there a question? There's no question. The minutes will stand approved as they are printed. Now ask the CEO if anyone has signed up to speak during the public session portion of our agenda on a specific agenda topic.
They have not, Mr. President.
Excuse me, and we will have your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Beginning with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have no active cases among district employees. This brings us to 100 confirmed positive cases since the beginning of the pandemic, with all folks recovered and returned to work. We have no employees with COVID-like symptoms awaiting their test results and no employees remaining at home because a member of their household has tested positive. So this is a good moment for all of us. So we are planning to begin our opt-in policy on October 18th for those employees interested in the voluntary exception to the face covering requirement. So under this policy, folks who show proof of vaccination to HR will receive a card that can be worn on their district badge, and with that, they can go without a face covering at district facilities, starting on October 18th. Folks who do not wish to do this, as well as anyone who wishes to continue to wear a face covering, which will be many folks, I assume, are welcome to continue to wear those face coverings, and we put out more information on this voluntary opt-in exception by video and email today. And of course, we will continue to monitor cases at the district and countywide and continue to hope for the decline in cases that we are seeing. So on September 23rd, Ohio EPA recognized the district with a Silver Encouraging Environmental Excellence Award. This award recognizes an organization's achievements in environmental stewardship. There were 15 organizations recognized across the state, and the district was noted for our efforts to increase efficiency, reduce waste, procure renewable electricity, and beneficially reuse products like ash and river rock. Some examples include our efforts in 2018 that reduced 14 million kilowatt-hours electricity use compared to our 2014 baseline, which was done through efficiency and conservation efforts, reusing incinerator ash in topsoil mixtures for about a 75% reduction in landfill waste, and new recycling efforts in 2020 that diverted 500 tons from landfills. So really quite an effort from folks across the district, and I wanted to recognize them. And this is the award, I guess, logo that comes from Ohio EPA, and so we appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Yes.
So turning to our work with the cities of Shaker Heights and Cleveland Heights as they address Horseshoe Lake Dam, we released the request for proposals for landscape architecture and engineering services for the Don Brook Stream Restoration at Horseshoe Lake Park on September 24th. Proposals are due November 12th, and both cities have appointed two of their staff members to sit on the review committee with district staff. On September 27th, the city of Shaker Heights voted in concurrence with our recommendation. As you may know, Cleveland Heights has hired the firm of Gannett Fleming to review our recommendation, and we expect that they will hear something next week. And we sent a letter to Cleveland Heights Council asking that they consider concurrence by November 8th. And then finally, at your chairs is a copy of our People in Progress newsletter. This highlights our 2021 service awards, which recognize the years of service and hard work from folks across the district. I want to congratulate those that are recognized, particularly Frank Greenland, who received the Lifetime Achievement Award, and it still came to work, even though he got elected. So thanks to HR and CCR teams for making the second virtual year a success. You probably noticed the banners in the hallway. They've really done a lot of work to try to recognize the significance of these milestones, even while we've been in the COVID pandemic. That's my report, Mr. President.
Did you just refer to Mr. Greenland as a milestone?
[laughing].
Okay. All right, just a question, something you said caught my attention. You said that the proposal that went out for Don Brook is a landscape architect?
Yes.
That seems a little unusual for stormwater, that we're looking for design and engineering from...
Yes, go ahead, Frank, if you want to start with that answer.
Well, it's going to be a team led by the landscape architect, but this is a heavy civil engineering job as well. What we've done, we have to make sure that we've got a good landscape on the work we do for the regional, so that's bringing down the dam, restoring the streams, and dealing with a ton of sediment. And there's going to have to be a good layout following the work we do to make it look, you know, good for the community and good for the stream.
Okay.
It's surrounded by a park, Horseshoe Park. So the amenities, the desires of the community to work in concert with the district's regional approach to broaden things into the park-like setting are important. So to get that engagement and that look from the outset is extremely important.
Well, I hear that. It just gives me pause that where the emphasis is less on the civil engineering part of it, because it is a damn structure.
Well, I wouldn't say it's less. I think it's just we put them in the lead, but there's a heavy-duty civil component. Now, the job of the district is to control this, right? To control the pre-design activities, to make sure landscape architecture and civil engineering are well represented as we move forward.
And I think, Mr. President, this is really structured in such a way that the two work together, because as Frank pointed out, the interplay between the way that that site is laid out, the way that the sediment is dealt with, the stream is restored, has a strong landscape architecture component. As you point out, the civil engineering is obviously essential in terms of making sure that the dam structure is taken down appropriately, the streams are rerouted through there, and we understand and appreciate that. This is just to highlight the fact that the layout begins with the design and that those two have to interplay very strongly together.
Okay, I won't belabor the point, but it seems to me if that were the case, we'd be talking more about a joint venture as opposed to a lead, so. All right. All right. Let's conclude your report.
Yes, it does, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the CEO? All right, then, let's go to our action items. Let's start with authorization to advertise, beginning with request authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 6119.10 for one-year requirement contract for sodium bisulfate solution at all wastewater treatment plants and including two one-year district renewal options with an anticipated expenditure of $256,000 for the first year. Also request authorization to publish notice calling for bids in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 6119.10 for the Shoreline Consolidation Sewer Project with an anticipated expenditure of $51,500,000.
Move to adopt 298 and 299-21.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Question, just if you could, on 299-21, $51 million, Shoreline, this is the final phase of this, as I understand it, and I do get or appreciate the fact that it's going to deal with a number of CSO structures in terms of reducing, I believe, upwards of 300-plus million gallons a year. So if you could just speak to that, and then the alignment impact, this is along the railroad track area, kind of south of the shoreway, but along a number of city Cleveland properties, including Kirtland Pump Station, and obviously, they have major facilities going through there from their raw water intakes that then kind of pump up the hill to Baldwin. So making sure that, well, we are coordinated with the impacts of this project, which I understand is going to be fairly deep versus those other assets.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. All good questions, President Brown. Yes, this is the final component of Control Measure 7. It is the Shoreline Consolidation Sewer, which will, when it's completed, discharge to the Shoreline Tunnel, which is currently in construction. Under this project specifically, we're constructing about 5,000 feet of a six-foot diameter tunnel, consolidation tunnel specifically, that again will discharge to that Shoreline Tunnel. In addition to that, we have four large shafts that will be constructed as part of this project, as well as multiple regulator mods up in the system or new regulators that will be constructed. And with it, this project specifically, we can be controlling six CSOs that directly discharge to Lake Erie. And to your point on the location of this new consolidation sewer is just south of the East Shoreway, between East 40th and East 55th. So John, if you'll go to the next slide, please. So zooming in on that consolidation sewer, you see here those, the Kirtland Pump Station, I'm sorry, and the 48-inch water mains associated with that pump station. Our sewer or our tunnel will go directly under those water mains, about 90 feet underneath. So during design, we did coordinate significantly with Cleveland Water in regards to our design, including them reviewing the plans prior to us finalizing those plans. In addition to that, during construction, we will be monitoring settlement in this area to ensure that there's no potential for damage to those water mains.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? If not, without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 298 and 299-21.
All right, let's go. Authorization issue request for proposals, starting with request for authorization issue on RFP in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 6119 for an accredited education provider to support the development of technical trades under the Maintenance Training Program. Also authorization issue on RFP in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 153 for stormwater testing and construction inspection services for the period 2022 through 2026. And then final request for authorization to issue an RFP in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Chapter 6119 for software and professional services under the OROCO EBS Upgrade Project.
Move Resolutions 300 through 302-21, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bachi.
Second.
Okay, second by Mayor Ali. Question, just 321-21, definition of technical trade? Who are we focusing on here?
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. This specific resolution is for our maintenance training program, and so the focus is on our maintenance craft trades, which include plant utility maintenance person, plant maintenance instrumentation technician, plant maintenance electrician, and system utility maintenance person. This slide summarizes the program design, and you can see third row from the bottom of the academic coursework. So this RFP is to select an outside partner to assist us with the 15-plus courses that support the completion of this four-year program.
And Elizabeth, we're using skilled trades and technical trades interchangeably?
In the resolution request.
In the resolution request, correct.
Okay, well, that's kind of the genesis of my question. I'm trying to understand, are we, are these synonymous, or they mean two different things?
In the resolution request, they mean the same thing.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? There are no without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 300 through 302-21.
Let's go. Authorization to enter into agreement, starting with request for authorization entering to a project agreement. The Carruga Soil and Water Conservation District to provide local match funding for West Branch of Euclid Creek, Mayfield Campus Stream Restoration Project Phase 1 in the city of Lynnhurst with a district contribution to a project cost in the amount not to exceed $59,463, and a CSWCD contribution toward the remaining cost of the project, currently estimated to be $300,000, from the Ohio EPA's Section 319 Grant Program. Request for authorization entering to a project agreement with the Carruga Soil and Water Conservation District to provide local match funding for Greenbrier Valley Flood Plain Restoration Project in the city of North Royalton with a district contribution towards project cost in the amount not to exceed $115,000, and a CSWCD contribution toward the remaining cost of the project, currently estimated to be $300,000 from the Ohio EPA Section 319 Grant Program. And then finally, request for authorization entering to a project agreement with West Creek Conservancy to provide local match funding for the ridge and stream restoration at Padua Soccer Fields Project in the city of Palmer with a district contribution to a project cost in the amount not to exceed $100,000, and a WCC contribution towards the remaining cost of the project, currently estimated to be $350,000. Include $300,000 from the Ohio EPA Section 319 Grant Program and $50,000 from WCC.
Move to adopt 303 through 305-21.
Motion by Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulik. Is there a question? There's no question without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 303 through 305-21.
Thank you. Let's have authorizations to enter into contracts, starting with request for authorization entering to one-year requirement contract, sole source supplier asset resources for purchase of up to 220 tons of Olivine sand for use at renewable energy facility in amount not to exceed $71,500. Request for authorization enter to a two-year requirement contract with Great Lakes Petroleum for fuel management and monitoring services at all district facilities in amount not to exceed $611,388.40. Request for authorization enter into a nine-month requirement contract with Noronius Suns, Inc. for odor control facilities media replacement services in amount not to exceed $556,346. A request for authorization enter into a construction contract with Suburban Maintenance and Construction, Inc. for Lakeview Cemetery Dam Maintenance Repairs in amount not to Request for authorization to enter into a construction contract with the CD Whitfield Company, LLC for the southerly boiler feedwater pumps replacement project in amount not to exceed $187,658.20. And then finally, a request for authorization enter into a construction contract with Synergy, LLC for district-wide HVAC equipment and systems upgrade project in amount not to exceed $70,070,000.
Move for adoptions of Resolutions 306 through 311-21.
Motion by Mayor Ali.
Second.
Second by Mayor Bachi. No question. Okay, if there's no question without objection, they're approved.
Resolutions 306 through 311-21.
Thank you. Let's go. Authorization to pay dues. Request for authorization to renew the district's National Association of Clean Water Agencies and our fiscal year 2022 subscription for the period October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022, in the amount of $50,130.
Move to adopt 312-21.
Motion by Mr. Sulik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Joyce. Question? There's no question without objection, approved.
Resolution 312-21.
All right, let's go to...
[laughing].
Yeah, property-related transactions. Bear with me. All right, let's go. Authorization to acquire one permanent sewer easement at property known as Permanent Parcel Number 10504019 and 10504020, located at 5466 Lake Court, City of Cleveland, owned by SEN Services LLC, necessary for construction and maintenance of Shoreline Consolidation Sewer Project, total consideration $1,800. Request for authorization and acquire one permanent stormwater easement at the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 02905006, located at 20445 Emerald Parkway Drive in the city of Cleveland, owned by Emerald Research Park, LTD. And to enter into a right-of-entry agreement for the said property and to acquire one parcel and fee simple to be split from the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 02906008, located at Emerald Court in the city of Cleveland, owned by Emerald Research Park, LTD, necessary for construction and maintenance of the debris racks and access road improvement at various locations project, and to allow for closing costs to be dispersed to North Star Title Services LLC with total consideration of $1 plus closing costs. I had to give it, but not have to read that.
[laughing].
All right. All right, let's go. Authorization to deposit additional $10,000 with the Carraga County Pro Bay Court as consideration for court settlement for appropriation of two permanent sewer easements at property known as Permanent Parcel Numbers 10810001 and 10810002, located at 4848 East 105th Street and 10201 Elk Avenue in the city of Cleveland, owned by Randell Ware, necessary for construction and maintenance of the Shoreline Storage Tunnel Project, total settlement amount $19,450. Request for authorization enter to right-of-entry agreement for the use of property known as Permanent Parcel Number 83138082, located at 6828 Barney View Drive in the Village of Mayfield, owned by Keith Campbell and Elizabeth Rothman, necessary for maintenance of the Cranbrook Barney View Intercommunity Relief Sewer Project, total consideration $1. Request for authorization enter to a right-of-entry agreement for use of property known as Permanent Parcel Number 8314001, located at 943 Wilson Mills Road in the Village of Mayfield, owned by the Village of Mayfield, necessary for maintenance of Cranwood Barney View Intercommunity Relief Sewer Project, total consideration $1. Request for authorization acquire one parcel and fee simple known as Permanent Parcel Number 39219102, located at 11111 Blodgate Creek Trail in the city of Stromsville, owned by Carol V. Conick, necessary for construction and maintenance of Blodgate Creek SWMP Problem Area Fire Project to enter into a lease agreement with Carol V. Conick, to enter into an assignment and assumption agreement with the Western Land Conservancy, and to allow for the entirety of the payment closing costs to be dispersed to Ohio Real Title LLC with total consideration $250,000 plus closing costs. Let's see. Authorization to acquire one permanent stormwater easement, one temporary easement, property known as Permanent Parcel Number 58121016, located on Broadview Road in the city of Broadview Heights, owned by Marius G. Marita and Elena Adella Marita, necessary for construction and maintenance of Chippewa Creek Stream Stabilization near Broadview Road Project, total consideration of $1. Request for authorization to extinguish and release one permanent stormwater easement and one temporary easement at property known as Permanent Parcel Number 8712802, located at 376, let's see, Gates Mills Road in the city of Pepper Pike, owned by Barbara M. Baker, trustee under the Barbara M. Baker Family Living Trust Agreement acquired for construction and maintenance of Pepperloose Creek COVID rehabilitation at Gates Mill Project, total consideration to the district $6,400. Request for authorization to acquire one permanent easement, two temporary easements in the property known as Permanent Parcel Number 00302002, located at 5400 Whiskey Island Drive in the city of Cleveland, owned by Cleveland Carraga County Port Authority, necessary for construction and maintenance of the Westerly Chemically Enhanced High Rate Treatment Project, total consideration $150,250. Let's see, three, let's go. Next is a request for authorization to acquire one parcel and fee simple known as Permanent Parcel Number 76116084, located at 19906 Long Brook Road in the city of Warrensville Heights, owned by the Carraga County Land Reutilization Corporation, necessary for construction and maintenance of Mill Creek Bank stabilization, Warrensville Heights Project, total consideration of $68,276.69. And then finally, request for authorization to acquire one parcel and fee simple known as Permanent Parcel Number 48914035, located at 4856 Oak Ridge Drive in the city of North Royalton, owned by Michael P. and Jennifer D. Hurley, necessary for construction and maintenance of Big Creek Main Branch Master Plan Project Area B.C., NR02 Project, to enter into a lease agreement with the Hurleys and to allow for the entirety of the payment plus closing costs to be dispersed to Ohio Real Title Agency, LLC, total consideration $290,000 plus closing costs. What is the pleasure of this?
Move to adopt 313 through 323-21, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Joyce, second by Mayor Bachi. Question, got to have at least one. Let's go, 323-21. You had a couple others with some significant numbers. Is this $290,000? So just question about what we're accomplishing here. It sounds like we're buying either some very valuable property or a couple of homes along the way, and I'd imagine it's in somebody's floodplain that we're trying to eliminate and bring some relief to, so if you could.
Okay, this is in North Royalton, and you're right. This area is subject to significant roadway flooding in very small storm events, one-year, two-year storm events. The parcel we're acquiring is in yellow. We've got interests of a couple other parcels highlighted in purple. We've already acquired the one outlined in red. It's kind of hard to see, but this is the Big Creek Main Branch, and it has two classic 90-degree bends in very close proximity, which is not good for streams generally. So ultimately, this will become a project area under the stormwater program to deal with the culvert issues and reclaim floodplain to improve conveyance and prevent the street flooding in this area. This is a fair market value purchase in North Royalton.
All right, that's helpful. Thank you very much. Other questions?
Mr. President, I'd like to point out that Mayfield Village in Broadview Heights only costs three bucks.
[laughing]. Let's see, I'll add that to the buck I was already going to pay for, so for $4. But, thank you. you. No other questions? Without objection, they are approved.
Resolutions 313 through 323-21.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that completes our action items for now. Let's go information items. Couple of interesting discussions here, so I want to talk about the, you have two items. We have certification of delinquent sewer accounts to the Carrick County Fiscal Officer for 2021 second half final certification and certification of direct bill, delinquent sewer and stormwater accounts to Carrick County and Lorraine County's fiscal officers. So if you could, just explain to the board, if you would, where the, what time period these are from, and how does this affect the actions that we haven't taken for a while, and what makes these somewhat unique in terms of why we're taking this action now?
Okay. Good afternoon, President Brown, members of the board. As you pointed out, we have two lists of accounts the district certified for the second half of 2021. This is our first certification process since the second half of 2019. As you know, we have put off certification as a result of the COVID pandemic. What we have moved forward with for this specific certification is account balances dating back to 12/31/19 and prior. So what we were really looking for here is accounts with outstanding balances from before the pandemic. We're aware that there's federal funding likely coming down for many of our customers in relation to COVID impacts. These balances are likely not going to be impacted by those. So we specifically looked for, as we always do through all of our accounts, specific balances as of that timeframe, and that's what we move forward with certifying in the second half. This is also, I'll note, the first time, we had intended to in 2020, but this will be the first time we've done a full certification of outstanding stormwater balances as well. So there's about $800,000 total of stormwater balances included in this certification, again, all dating to 12/31/19 and prior.
Okay, and, and any questions?
Do we verify that these properties are inhabited and still active?
Part of our process, Mr. Sulik, is to ensure that the current owner is still in place, so we have a systematic process to move, to remove properties that have transferred or are no longer occupied off of the list. We exclude customers who are active on payment plans. So we have a very systematic approach to do our best to ensure that the current, that the customer, the account holder is the same person as the owner in Carrick County's records and that it's a valid charge.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Do you want to make a comment?
Yes, please. Mr. President, I would like Constance to pick up on that as we do extensive outreach to folks to make sure that they're aware of our affordability programs. And then, Ken, if you could also mention the automation of this process to take out any potential for human bias as we put folks into this.
Sure, I'll go first, Constance, briefly. So we have been working finance, customer service with the IT department for several years to implement a billing data warehouse. And one of its main uses for us is to put some automation in place in what was previously a very manual process. So we're able to use this tool to go through the hundreds of thousands of account records and identify based on balances due and all the criteria within our current certification policy to make sure that we are across the board fairly and appropriately identifying the accounts to be certified.
And if I could, if one of you will answer this question in your comments as well as to whether or not as a result of us taking this, this action, it results in the foreclosure of property.
Do you want to pick that up, Eric?
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the board, we've had really good conversations with the attorney at the county that handles the foreclosure process for them. And what they have assured us is that the simple existence of water and sewer loans by them, or water and sewer charges on the property by themselves do not result in foreclosure. So if those are the only charges that are delinquent and the only things that are certified, if there's not, property tax is delinquent as well, they will not foreclose on that property. And if, they have assured us that if a mistake is made and one of those does somehow start down the foreclosure process and they're made aware of that error, they will fix it and they'll pull back from that action. So we've had good conversations with them. It's also the fact that the foreclosure process is quite protracted. From the time that an individual becomes delinquent on their taxes, it is typically three to five years, and it's typically nonresponsiveness to outreach from the county on those delinquencies before the foreclosure process is initiated. So I think it's, it's quite clear that our simple act of certifying those charges and placing a lien on the property does not then in any way immediately result in foreclosure.
All right, thank you. That's important to understand and know.
So I would, I would also add, President Brown and members of the board, that we have always done outreach to these customers pre-certification to, and we, we became much more aggressive in that outreach during the pandemic, contacting them directly through a number of means to encourage them to get on payment plans, to contact us if they had special needs or issues. And that process has continued. We've also engaged with a number of organizations in the community, the food bank being one that we have partnered with in addition to churches and other organizations to try to reach people who are in need of assistance. And so that effort continues. And so we were successful in getting some folks to call us, to get involved so that they would not be on this list, but this is, these are the folks who ultimately were unresponsive.
I appreciate that. Something you actually made me think of, because you mentioned the food bank, Greater Cleveland Food Bank, which I also chair that board, and they have a major capital expansion project I'm sure you're aware of.
Yes.
One of the things they'll be doing on their current property is adding some, what we call, we refer to as wraparound services. So the things that kind of lead to folks being in that circumstance, whether it's, you know, socioeconomic, you know, employment, other things, those services are going to be kind of on site. And so it might be helpful to have a conversation with them about just utility services, utility bills in general, as to whether there's an opportunity to intersect or provide some type of counseling, et cetera, to folks who'll be coming to the site in that regard.
We'd be happy to follow up with that.
All right.
For sure.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, good. I think that's, that's a good overview. I think it's good for us to have some good context on this issue. And I understand, again, we're going back to kind of the second part of, I think you said, 2019. So these are accounts that have not had any activity in order to try to resolve them up to that point.
Couple of years.
So, all right. All right, thank you. Let's see. Let's go to open session. Any question or concern? Public session on any subject. Madam CEO, did anybody signed up to speak in that regard?
They have not, Mr. President.
All right, then I believe we do have one matter for executive session.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Pursuant to Ohio Vice Code, Section 121.22G1, I hereby move to enter into executive session to consider the compensation of public employees, sir.
All right.
Second.
That's a motion and a second. I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mayor Ali?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Sulik?
Yes.
Mayor DeGea, yes. Mayor Bachi?
Yes.
And President Brown, members of the board, we're across the hall as we were for the last executive session in the training room.
Good to know. I want to be in a room with myself.
You, too?
You too?
Yeah, okay.
This meeting?
Yeah.
I would like to dismiss the fact that we started. But we updated your passwords. Thank you.
You broke it?
I broke it.
Okay. All right. So we obviously have had some lively discussion. We do have a few more questions which I will communicate to you and your staff.
Okay.
So we're not going to take any action coming out of executive session.
We'll hold this.
We'll hold this for right now.
Okay.
But again, let me thank you and your team for the presentation because it did help clarify some issues and concerns. And we see the progress based on where we were last time. We can tell that there's been some marked efforts to move us in the right direction. But we do have a few remaining questions and concerns which I will articulate. So having said that, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mayor Bajie.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sulek. I'll take it without objection. We adjourn. Thank you.